Real quick, and we'll get to some of it eventually. Just to let you know, schools in the area that we have worked at and are working at, and I'll just start down the panhandle, come this way. Goodwell, Guiman, Balco, Sharon Mutual, Fort Spine, Woodward, Shattuck, Fairview, Canton. On the other side of you, Deer Creek, Lamont.
Sealing.
Lamont, do you have?
Sealing.
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 So, we work this area all the time. Firm started in 1984, and so we've been doing this for a little while. Doing nothing, pretty much, but schools around the state. And people have been blessed beyond belief. We got office in Norman, which is our main office where we started. There's thirty-some odd of us there. A smaller office, about nine people, in Tulsa. An office in Texas that my partner, you know, he's located in. Also, small office in Tannet, Ohio. So, we do schools in Oklahoma and do schools in Texas. And that's what we do. And all that wonderful stuff. You can see, I hope I'm got everybody. At Woodward, we work at the public schools and also with the High Plains Technology Center. But Cherokee, left off Cherokee, Blackwell, and Burlington. So, not most of them.
You're good.
Yeah, so better than I thought. Some pictures of just some quick things that were done. Sharon Mutual, we did safe rooms at both schools. We've done, I counted them up the other day, but trying to update the, there's a deal in the book there about all the safe rooms. Done one-hundred-and-sixty different buildings for one-hundred-and-twenty-nine actual safe rooms in those one-hundred-and-sixty school buildings. Okay? And I believe we've probably done more safe room buildings than anybody else knows. And they're not hard to do, and they're not as expensive as you might think that they are. And when you're finished with them, they look just like any other school building. You can hardly tell unless you know what you're looking at, that it's a safe room. You've got to be able to recognize the right kind of door that it is and the right kind of coverings that may go over a window. Other than that, you walk in, it would be just like this room. Other than it's really behind the walls, it is concrete and concrete roof. Okay? So, Shattuck, the gym, under the bleachers there, safe room deal. Tom did that particular building. This is Woodward, Highland Elementary. We put safe rooms at all of the schools. And their last big bond issue, they got a bond issue coming up in April for what, higher six million, something like that, to do some more work and some other stuff that they're trying to get done. But every school now has a safe room, you know, there. And again, they look just like classroom.
These down there, you know?
Yeah. You see, you know, over the exterior windows, if you have a window, and you should have a window still in every classroom, you know, it has a special kind of FEMA door that has a triple deadbolted lock that you, you know, walk out, close it down, two-hundred-and-fifty minor winds. That's what this whole thing is designed for. The middle school building, drive down the highway, make the turn there and take a look. Model, you know? This is Sealing. Sealing, you know, they're one of the best schools in over at Oklahoma with all the, you know, three-hundred windmills, their evaluation. They are replacing everything. Okay? Free K through twelve, one-hundred percent everything. But what they're, they're building, most of their high school building, if you're not from there, built nineteen forty. Okay? So, it's been a while. And, but anyway, that's what they're doing. The entire building is ICF, they're quarter-placed concrete. And there are three different parts that are actually FEMA safe rooms in the building. So, each level, elementary school, middle school, high school, they've all got a place to go. But the entire, you can see kind of what it looks like, and it, that's the directions they went. It is a, an extra probably to do what they're doing, seven to eight percent extra block. But they didn't want it to blow air, burn down. And it won't when they're finished. So, this is kind of what that stuff looks like. Just every four feet, put the, these things are like teflon blocks in the way, they slide together, you know, they're steel and pour it full of concrete every four feet, let that set, go up another four feet and so forth. And when you're done, something that might be of some interest with your project, band of music, the styrofoam on the outside of it and the concrete, no sound goes through it. Okay? It's a, it's a great sound-attaining material. And for band and music spaces, it does work fantastic. So, you can kind of see what that looks like, the entire thing. Some of our services that, you know, here, Katie and Charlie, you know, we'll get to everybody, but Katie might tell you a little bit about what she does in the office.
So, Katie, I am one of the interior designers at Fort Mulliam's. We have four in-house interior designers at our firm. We've all worked all over the state. I actually did the interiors at Sealing and at Fairview. I've helped with Fairview and Zen stuff all over the state. Obviously, we do a lot of education design, so there's a lot of great things that you get from us specializing in that area. So, there's just a few considerations that I think is really important to bring up, what we really focus on. And first of all is functionality, because these spaces are made for you to work in and your teachers to work in and your kids to function in. So, band and music, obviously, the acoustics, that kind of stuff. And for, if we're doing concession building, making sure that everything's the right distance, you don't want to be running across a concession stand to be doing something that you could have had right next to you. The big thing about that, too, is we're not going to cookie cutter it for you. We're not going to give you somebody else's project. We're going to make sure to come in and work with you on what your needs are, because your needs aren't going to be the same as Edmund or Sealing or anywhere else. So, it's all really about what you want. Next is visual impact, obviously, interiors. We want to make it look aesthetically pleasing. But there's other things about it that are really important, being color selection can stimulate students and excite them and get them to a place where they're more willing and ready to learn. Also, stuff like lights. There are great lights that are tunable to coordinate with how the light of the sun reacts So, next is material selection, and that's something that's really important for you guys, because not just in the finishes, but in the fact that these finishes have to be taken care of. And there's a lot of things that we can do as interiors to give you what you need. So, there's new products out that don't have any waxing needed for the floor. So, that can be a really big deal. We want to give you the most bang for your buck, give you the best space and the best materials, and it's going to last you a life of your building.
I think that the other thing that she didn't bring up that she does, all of the spaces, you know, we have this software that allows us to design every space of what it's going to look like before it's ever built. You know, as the drawings are being drawn, and each space with colors can be shown to you what it will look like and show you the material that it will be. And it's kind of cool that, you know, they have this software now that, you know, you can do a lot of things that nature, both the interiors, which she would do, or, you know, where Tom's doing it, you know, if he gets to work with you on their actual building as well. So, I think those are the. We do the boards, the renderings of the spaces that we're doing, I think was good. And, you know, I'm not sure what's next on the slide.
We got an example of what?
Yeah, so this is just an example of one of the finished boards that was done for one of the Norman schools. And again, it's all about, you know, you guys and your school and creating something for you. So, we want you to be able to see what you're getting before you get it. We were talking about earlier, you know, we can give you our suggestions on what to do, but this design is for you guys, it's not for us. We don't design for ourselves. And so, being able to show you what you're actually getting, because you can't just tell that from a construction set, you know, that goes to the construction manager, we want to show you on the floor pattern what it's going to look like, the materials you're going to go. We will bring every single material that we're going to put in your building for you to see and you to okay, so that you know that you're getting the best stuff, that this stuff's going to hold up to students, et cetera. So, this is just one of the finished boards, but like we said, I think on the next slide, we also, oh, no. Well, we also do renderings, so that's the three-D. We can basically show this space, whatever space it is, in a three-D format with all of the finishes photorealistic going in, so that, again, you know what you're getting and you're happy with it and there's never any question, because, you know, you only get to do these things once every hour.
That's true.
I think the thing with bond promotion here, look, if you guys, you know, if you don't pass your bond issue, no one gets any success out of this deal. We don't get paid anything, you don't have a building. And so, we've kind of developed a bond program, and Charlie will talk more about it than me, but ways, and we've had great success with bond issues the last two years, doing some of the stuff that he's going to talk to you about. And that's the thing, you know, how can you be successful with your bond issue, you know, and get passed? Because you've got to get sixty, okay? And none of this is just, oh, this is doing bond issue, doesn't work that way very well anymore. Used to sometimes, but not too much anymore. So, Charlie, you might tell them what ways you do.
I'm going to try this and see if it works. So, my name's Charlie Reeves again. I'm the one that threw up my cards. So, I have a card. And a little bit of my history, in my first life, I was an educator. My parents are educators, my grandparents are educators. I came up through, you know, I'm from southwest Oklahoma, from Cache. Went to OU, got a music ed degree, was a band director for seven years, and taught in Elgin and Noble in Maysville. And then went through some life changes, family changes, decided I just hit restart on the life button, went back to college, studied architecture, and been working, after I got out of school, been working for clients ever since, so thirteen years now. And I happened to be the guy that ended up doing bond promotion. How that happened, I don't know. Maybe I'm good at it.
Kind of, kind of.
So, anyway, over these thirteen years, you know, it's kind of developed. I mean, technology's changed, lots of things have changed, and we've just developed, over these thirteen years, things that haven't done these now for that long, start to see things that work. And so, I'm going to show you a few things, techniques we use. So, our services, basically, we can provide you with digital media, which I'll go into more, print media, we do a countdown campaign program, which I will explain more in a second, and then video media. Those are, those are the things we've been using mostly. We can do anything you want. Anything you can dream of, I, well, I will promise you I can get it done for you somehow. So, starting with digital media. So, a few things we've done in digital media realm, we can create a unique website for you, if you'd like that, something separate from your school website, so it's all isolated in one spot, if you think that would be helpful, that's something we can do. Or, we can, and that, that's like I said, that keeps the bond info separate from the school website. Or, we can go the other route, give you all the digital media you need, whether those be renderings, whether those be plans, whether that be text that you need us to generate, anything you need us to do that you can put on your own school website or on a social media site, if you guys are social media, if that's what your people are responsive to. And we also have in the past created social media sites for our clients and kind of ran those, if, if that's something that, that was a unique situation where someone outside of the school kind of needed to run it, and so we did it. The good thing about those things are, is that there's some kind of good things and bad things about social media. I mean, you can get, obviously, you can get information out directly. Now, by having an isolated site for your school bond, the good thing about it is, is that there is a central spot you can go for facts, period. But that could also be your website, if you wanted to be that. So, a central place, so if people in town are starting to talk and go, "I heard," they're going to try to build a twenty-million-dollar building. Someone can direct them to, deal them, "No, go look at it, it's not a twenty-million-dollar building." You know? And "I hear they're going to tear down," whatever. "No, go look." So, that, that's the good, the good thing about having a central place for all the information to be, whether that be through social media, whatever. The downfall of social media is, is that anyone in the middle of the night can sit there and get a bug in their bonnet, or whatever that phrase is, be in their bonnet, and decide that they're going to just blast everything you're doing. And by the time you get up the next morning, hundreds of people have read it, hundreds of people will share it, maybe thousands of people. And so, you know, those are things to consider. And that's all about knowing your people and who you want to reach within your school district and how they're going to respond to such things. So, those are considerations to do as we start a bond program. How do you want to get the information out? And do you want it to be completely managed by you? Do you want people to have a say? Because maybe everyone in the town's positive, maybe that just works and it's great. So, but that, those are considerations as far as digital media goes. And moving on, maybe, okay, to print media. So, print materials, those can be anything you need. If you need render, well, obviously, we'll give you renderings and images that you use, that you can use to show people, this is what we're voting on. Those are often used in, you know, in the community project, set them up at the bank, set them at each school site, set them wherever, so people can walk by and they can see what's happening. Those are good for town hall meetings. But besides those renderings, let's say you have a, you know, I'm trying to think of a spring event, big basketball tournament, and you want everyone to get something, we can, we can make you pamphlets, we can make you brochures, anything you can think of, we can make you, I've made little baseball cards with the project on the front, with all the stats on the back of the baseball card. So, whatever you dream of, I'll find a way to get it done. So, it can be customized to what you, what you guys think will be effective in your district. So, here's some examples of some renderings and boards. It's a little dark on the screen there. This is a current bond issue we're working on out of Balco. So, this is kind of an idea of the way it works. An overall site plan with the building's label, I don't know if you can read it from back there, I can't read it from here, but, you know, and then, and an idea of what the school building's going to look like. And here's the same thing we're doing over at Wenoke, showing what they're doing. So, you can have plans on there, text, whatever you think people need to see and know, we'll get it on there for you. Okay, so, our countdown campaign program, this is something that's kind of new within the last year or so for us. But basically, it is, we're calling it our Twenty for Twenty. It could be fifteen by fifteen, whatever we wanted it to be. But it's just basically a series of facts or infographics that you can use to put out on your website or whatever website or social media that you want, leading up to the bond. So, every day, someone's going to get a new fact. And this is a way to keep, it does a couple of things, I think. First of all, it gets all of you guys on the same page early, because you sit down, you write down, and then you come up with a clear message. These are the things we want to say, these are the things we want to do. And you, and you guys are all clear at the very beginning. And then, as you release these, people get information every day, leading up to the bond, so people will stay engaged up to the election. Because a big part, problem of bond elections in the past, you know, you start putting stuff out too early, people get disinterested. And then election day comes, and yeah, everybody's for it, but nobody shows up to vote. So, this is a great way to engage people, leading up to the election. So, every day, there's a new fact. Every day, it could be a picture, it could be a video, it could be a fact about the history of the town, it could be a fact about, whatever you think would be affected, we help put that together in a way to show it. So, I think I probably explained that. I'm going to show you some examples of what we did for Guiman, which we did a twenty by twenty, so we did twenty days before. Like I said, that could be fifteen days before, it could be ten days before. Generally, we like to stay within three weeks of heavy promotion of the bond, because we don't want people to get tired of it. So, kind of three weeks is, we've kind of found as the sweet spot where people, it kind of builds to the bond election instead of going over the hill too early. So, here's some examples of the twenty by twenties we did for Guiman. So, they, they wanted to make sure that people knew that they appreciated what they gave them before. That's how they started. So, this is the very first day, day, day one of the twenty. You know, just thank you, this is what you gave us in the last bond, look at what you did. So, get people engaged. Well, come on now. All right. And then, you know, just facts. Make sure people know, this is a step. So, yeah, everything we've talked about may not be getting done right now, but this is the first step in a phase. And then, I guess that's it. So, going on to video media. So, video media, probably, right there is my guinea pig. He was the very first video I did, Tim Merchant for Woodward, what was that, two thousand and eight? Two thou, is that right? Two thousand and eight? So, and, and it's grown since then, we do a lot of them. I think over the years, I think I'm getting in the forty-five to fifty range of videos I've done for these school bonds. Hopefully, that ends up getting better at them. The benefit of the video, and these can be anything you want, I'm going to show you some different examples that are real different, but it gives a message to your voters, a clear message, your controlled message, and it puts a face to it. And it becomes personalized to, to the district, to the town, to the people. So, the people involved in the video could be school board members, could be superintendents, could be teachers, could be towns, you know, influential people in town, or it could be children, if you want to use kids, whoever you want to use, that you think will, will get the message out. And so, that creates an emotional connection with your voters, and everything video-wise is done in-house by us. And when I say us, I mean me.
Him with just a little lip and somebody else.
So, so I will be in touch with you, I will be talking to you, you know, we'll talk about how, what you need, what you want, and I'll work with you to kind of take note of the message for that. So, let's go to some examples. So, here's a, this is the longest of the samples, this one's three minutes long. This is one of the videos we did for Guiman, we did three different shorter videos for Guiman. And this is kind of, uh, we need some better sound than that one. Well, there is sound.
I can hear a lot of people talking about our population need volatile. Our population is going to stay high.
As long as we have a packing plant here, which is revenue for our city, we're going to continue to grow.
The growth in Guiman has caused the enrollment in Guiman Public Schools to grow thirty percent since the last bond issue that passed.
We've had about a seven-hundred student increase, which about a thirty percent increase in students in Guiman Public Schools. And because of that, all of our buildings are full, every classroom is full.
Over the last several years, we've done our level best to fit students into the buildings that we have, but we're out of space. And that is an issue that has to be addressed. This bond issue will deal with some of that.
We have a citizens committee, so this wasn't just school board thinking, it wasn't administration, but it was actual citizens within the community that went and toured every school, looked at our population and looked at our needs and came up with a three-phase plan. And what we want to do is, over those three phases, affect every school in Guiman.
The Guiman School District in general is the lowest taxed district in our region, or in our class, class five A. And while I know that doesn't mean we owe you taxes, I think that it's important that we keep pace with what's happening in our state. I think it's important that our kids have the same opportunities that everyone else has.
We are behind in that. We need classrooms, we need things brought up today.
Really, we haven't done anything since Prairie was built, which would have been about fifteen years ago, was our last bond. You know, when we look at hiring teachers and doing things for Guiman, for the schools, we need to make the environment something that's really good, really good for our teachers by giving them more space and having less crowded rooms. It gives us the opportunity to hire more teachers, but it gives us the opportunity to make our teachers as good as they can be. We have great teachers, we should do great facilities.
As an educator, I just really feel like we have to look at our students and say, "These are going to be our future, guys, and I, they're going to be the future of guys." So, we want to educate them as best as we can, and that means having our facilities that are adequate for that.
If we don't take care of ourselves, and if we don't take care of the future of our children and our community, who, who else? Let's look around and see, who is going to support us? Who's going to help us with those things? We really need to help ourselves. So, we need to come together as a community, and we need to invest in our future. And these children are our future.
So, that's a particular style that we're, and that's probably the most style I do, is that kind of interview, people talking, and none of that scripted. That's just me sitting down, talking with those people, taking what they say, finding it all and putting it together to make the message. So, that, that's how that one works. Now, here's some examples. Here's one we did for North Rock Creek. And North Rock Creek was kind of an interesting situation, they were a K-through-eight school forever, and they got approval from the state to build a high school. So, they're passing a bond to try to build a high school. So, he wanted to use their students, reading their school creed, to kind of promote, hey, we're here, we want to stay here. So, this is, this is kind of...
North Rock Creek School prepares us for success by educating the whole child. We are taught with a high-quality staff.
We are educated academically, socially, emotionally, and physically.
As we develop, give you traits for lifelong success.
We are challenged to set high expectations for ourselves.
We encourage our parents and the community to become involved with our education.
Where is North Creek?
We have appropriate resources and facilities to meet our educational needs.
So, that's one example of you, of using students to convey a message. Got two more little short ones for you. These are videos we did for Cache. We did a band, they were doing a band room also, they needed to expand their band room. So, we tried to find, we tried to think of a way to show, how can we show that the band room's crowded? So, this is what we came up with. So, that's what we did to show the band. And then, this is kind of, you can see, this is kind of part of their twenty by twenty that cached in. So, one of the little cache video for you, and this is just students, kind of more students expressing their need, a little more, I'll just let, I'll just let it.
Yeah.
So, they were, part of their bond was books and technology, so that's what this little video is about.
I like to know all about math to the best.
My favorite class would have to be three.
I like to learn about to count to twenty. One, two, three, four, five.
My favorite subject would be English.
My favorite subject is math.
Science, because you get to learn about outside and flowers and books, and I love books.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
My favorite subject is math.
I like language.
My favorite subject is school social studies. We get to learn about the history of Oklahoma.
I learned twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
When I come to school, I like to learn about math.
Sort of tied with reading and science.
English. I like my essays.
My favorite subject in school is math.
Bring down the poet in me.
Bring down the poet in me.
What I really like about school is books and stuff.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
So, kind of an interesting thing on Cache and this program is, we worked at Cache, um, they'd worked in Cache longer than, when I was a student at Cache.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-two.
Nineteen eighty-two, and nineteen eighty-four, you built the junior high, right? I was the first seventh grade class in that junior high. So, even though I didn't know it, I've been associated with them nearly my life. And, um, so we worked there a long time, and so Cache had had trouble with the financial downturn of everything, of getting bonds passed. We'd never had trouble in Cache before, all of a sudden, a bond fails, and then another bond fails. And so then we get with the Cache School District, and we use this program, it passes overwhelmingly. So, I mean, I can't, it's hard to quantify that, yes, it was the video, yes, it was the twenty-by-twenty, yes, it was this. It's hard to say what it is, but we've had a lot of success with this. And here's a little, um, here's some recent, we've used this kind of program on every one of these in the last year, and you can see by these numbers that people are getting out, and people are noticing, and people are better. And so it's, it's feeling like it's effective. I don't know how to scientifically determine that, I'm not the science guy, we'll have to talk to Dale.
I'm gonna ask you.
So, but it, but it's been effective, and, and a lot of these ideas I've gotten over the years by talking to school boards, by talking to superintendents. Someone will come up with a great idea, and all of a sudden, we'll implement it, and then every school district around, hey, you know that thing you did over at Alva? We like that, can you do that? Yep, so we'll do that. So I, I really try to sit down with you guys and work the best way to present, communicate your message and why you need the bond, and how you are gonna deal with it responsibly, and all those things, to your, to your, um, community. So, that's kinda what I do, and, um, I'm also a drone pilot, so any drone footage you see, that's me too, so...
I flew it, I flew it too. One time, I flew it over one, one of our, your person's...
I think it should be noted, too, none of those promotions advocated a yes vote, which is illegal, as you know, even if we put it on our website, it still has to be a neutral deal, you can't say vote.
All we can do is, all we can do is try to show, you know, in a positive way, the things that you need, and encourage people to get out and support the school by voting. That's, that's the extent of what we can do, and that's what we try to do with every video, with every board, with every brochure, so. So I'm gonna hand this back over, no, I'm handing it over to Tom.
No.
Tom, I'll talk to you a little bit about your projects.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
You got a clicker, don't you?
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Tom Barzak, I'm a project architect at Clarence, and... How many? Almost twenty, nineteen, in two days, I'll be nineteen years. So, I was thinking it's twenty, and then I did the math, and it's, oh, one more year to go, one more year to go. So anyways, um, I've been up here with, with Tim, and, and we've met and talked and walked the sites, and you wanna click to that one?
Yep.
Okay. So, we've got a little short list of projects, and I don't have one designed to lay out for you to describe to you, but I kinda tell you the thought processes we've gone to, and some of the decisions you're gonna have in front of you with these projects. And, and the main one is with the Band of Vocal Music Building. And here's your auditorium. There's really a couple locations you can put, I think originally we talked about putting it up in here, where frankly, there's just no room. It won't fit. We looked at putting it over here, on the east side, uh, which ties directly back to stage, but one of the challenges you're gonna have, that is that gorgeous piece of history you have on the face of that building, which it can be moved, there's things you can do, but that is one of those deciders that you're gonna have to, to, to come across. Another one is over here on, it's also about eight feet lower than the stage. So if you build it there, you're going to either have to build it down lower and ramp up to the stage, or you're gonna have to build it on a hill, which gets pretty expensive. Uh, I'm kinda walking you through this to, to, to just kinda elaborate on the point that I can sit here and design you a, 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 you know, before you even call for your bond, exactly what this is gonna be, before I even sit down with you, but it's not my building. It's not Clarence's building, it's your building, and you're gonna have certain needs and wants with it. And, and this is just one piece of the bond, but I'm just gonna kinda walk you through it. So on this one, on the southeast corner, we can save this space and put a band of vocal music building with classroom, or now classrooms, with practice rooms and offices, and tie it on to stage directly where the loading dock is. So that's another option, but again, you have this hill that slopes down. So anything we build on the east side, um, you're looking at a lot of fill, or you're looking at building it down low and then having to climb back up to your stage. A third option, which is one of the ones I actually like the best of the three, it's not necessarily the best, but one of the ones I like is, you really don't have much in the way of a lobby for your auditorium, you're kinda right off the hallway. So one of the things we can do, and you have existing mechanical systems here, which we really don't wanna get into unless you're gonna start, it starts snowballing at some point when we start getting into this space. So keeping it separate and detached, or with a, with a, with a connection piece, there is the opportunity to create a lobby through here for really for the auditorium, with the band of vocal music buildings on either side. That kinda serves as a entryway and a lobby for kinda, for, for the arts, for, for, for the school. And it saves, you build it up, at this point, you probably have a slight change in elevation, but you can build it at the same entry, at the same grade of the entry to the auditorium. So you're saving a lot of money, you get a, a, a fresh space to the auditorium. And we said there's a lot of different things. The only downside of it, though, is now you don't have direct access to the stage. So those are those things that, you know, your staff and, and you as a body get, are gonna get to decide, you know, what's the most important thing, and those trade-offs. What we get to do is kinda help you guide you through those decisions. The cost, the functionality, the aesthetics, um, you know, how it, you know, how it just fits on the site. You know, one of the things we talked about a lot is the parking. You can certainly add more up here, but I think if you come out here with some long wing that blocks off the whole back of the parking lot, it's really not a good idea either. So you've got some choices that you can kinda go back and forth with on that, but really, those are, I think, your three best options, and they all have some pros and cons. For the track and stadium lighting, um, you've got a six-lane track now, and there's some information I don't have. Are you going to an eight-lane, or just looking at resurfacing, do you know yet?
You know, that's a question that we haven't even discussed yet. We only raised that, having an eight-lane, it'd be able to host any kind of an OSSAA. I'm not sure that we'd ever be able to do that because of our location. And I don't know if we have room without having to go into our football field itself, to our retaining wall, and those types of things. That was something that we were gonna just visit with after we started that discussion.
So yes, one of the things, if you do eight-lane, you're probably gonna bounce, and then more than likely, you're probably impacting your retaining walls, and again, it's a cost issue. Uh, for lighting, you've got several different choices, um, I made a few notes here, which I can't remember the numbers. Basically thirty, fifty, seventy, and ninety-foot candles, how well you wanna light this, and what it's gonna be used for. It's a, a middle school football field, and...
Practice.
Practice for the high school.
And little league.
And little league.
And JV.
So... A, a typical high school, uh, field would have seventy or seventy-five foot candles, okay? If it was just practice, like what you're talking about, fifty probably gets it, okay? Thirty's probably too dim. But fifty, it might be where you wanna go, between that and seventy-five, okay? If, if you were a big school, talking about a six-A school, that was gonna have some of the TV games, they wanted it to be ninety foot candles. And I don't see that that is something that... Beyond what you're looking for. Yeah, that's, so that's kinda the range, starting at thirty, going to, going to ninety, uh, and the cost that's associated with it.
Definitely more than thirty.
Yeah. I, I, fifty or seventy-five is what you're probably...
I'm trying to think, that, are those seventy-foot old poles sunk in the ground? Ten? Eighty?
The ones that are out there now?
Yeah, those up poles.
I don't know what they are, you know, how tall they are. Typically, uh, what they're gonna use is at least a seventy-foot tall steel pole, uh, and, uh, you know, depending upon how many foot candles you need, how many, you know, bars they have with lights on, so... Cost of that range, like one fifty to four hundred thousand, depending on how many foot candles, that's kinda the range.
Is there any thought about you, would you ever use that for your high school stadium?
I, 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 I'd never see that because of the ability to go out and play on such a great football field and, and top thing, and... It's always been that way, I don't see it ever changing. And we've worked in cooperation with them, with some of our money's going up to help with that, so... No, I don't see that. I just see that as practice, JV, and down football.
Do they have a track?
No, they don't.
Northwestern does not.
So no one has a track here?
We're the only ones.
Is it a four-hundred meter track, or do you know?
Yes.
It's not, it's not a four-forty, it is a four-hundred meter.
Yes, it's four-hundred meters.
Okay.
You're the expert. We got it from here.
Cause I, you know, we, we didn't measure anything, I just stepped in, looked at it, and, you know, asked that question.
See, it was built nineteen, it was completed in nineteen eighty.
Okay.
Okay? And we've probably had, I know we've had two Band-Aid jobs on that, and, uh, Cherokee's got an extra track, Jefferson's got an extra track, Okemah's got an extra track. I talked to David Jacksons this last Wednesday, don't think we'd ever host anything up here because we're just so far outlasted. That, we can't host our own invitation, even with a six...
With a six, you can do that.
Yeah, we can do that. So, and I know Northwestern is getting ready to, uh, implement girls' track. They're gonna utilize it, they have no desire to host a track, I mean, from what I understand, so...
Well, you know, and of course, you got to get to decide this, but, you know, uh, maybe you just put, you know, make repairs on the asphalt as needed, and curb as needed, and just recoat it with a good, you're a clean track surface.
The last time we did it was a Band-Aid job, so it needs to be better than Band-Aid.
Okay.
We need to get some Gorilla Tip on it this time, bro, that's what it takes.
Well, we did the one at Elgin, and it was time, because that, your thing only lasts, you know, it's only one for five or six years, and that's it, okay? It might last seven or eight, and then it starts coming off in chunks, okay? And that's what it does. And so, uh, you know, that's a quarter of a million dollar, you know, fix, and you go in there, take it all off, talk all up, and, you know, and you can really redo all the asphalt if you want to, uh, if only if it needs it. But what we did there was, the curb was still in good shape, uh, but we had, uh, many, many asphalt places that we had to go in, dig out, reasphalt, and get it all, all done, you know, properly, and then put the new surface on it. But the surface by itself is a quarter of a million dollar deal, and that was for, and, and down there, an eight-lane track. So it's not gonna be a whole lot different, because that was four years ago now. But, you know, it's something that you could do, and to keep the cost, you know, down, uh, there's no reason to, unless you just want to replace all that stuff.
Well, if we're gonna do it, we wanna do it right, and that's why we've gotta go with that, as the experts.
Yeah. One hundred percent, I agree with that.
Okay.
Last piece is the restroom concession, um, which, you know, is smaller is big, and with the seating you have there now, I mean, code-wise, you don't have to make it very big, um, so talking to a couple holders at my name, a few five hundred, a thousand square feet, we'd do it, and it can be as complicated or as simple as we want. Charlie, there's some slides and some examples of some of these projects on style. And there should be some band concession buildings, um, this one is in Wayne. I'm just kinda flicking through them. Acoustic panels, portable risers, this is kind of the thing now with the band. And it can be set up in stage configurations or riser configurations, lots of options with that. The instrument storage, there's some old computers on there.
Yeah.
Whoa. Commodores. Okema Fine Arts. Stroud. The treatment of all of them's pretty similar, here's a track, Catusa, brand new one.
There's a little fly-around of it.
This, this is a new eight-lane track that we did up there. Charlie demonstrated, and then those in flying ground.
Yeah.
This is the track at Atoka, and a new football field that we're just finishing.
And those are, and you can see what those LED lights look like, those are LED lighting there for Atoka's field. So that, that's kinda what those guys look like, if you're curious.
Sure. Naturally, what's being done these days.
In Western Heights, eight-lane track.
This is the Willamette Patchy, uh, concession and, uh, restrooms at the, the football field, uh, they just opened up this patch here with. And this is one we just finished event off, it's real simple, uh, you know, and it's got a press box thing up on top, concession, and, uh, two older restroom on the side, you know? This is the one at, uh, Okema. Concession at, or, this is the one, Tom's doing at Guyman. Probably, probably a little more what you're, what you're looking for, but as far aside, but...
What's that gonna do? Is that going on top of the old Guyman?
Mine?
Top side of that platform?
Yeah, behind the, behind the press box.
Yeah, right, right where the, the concession is, right near the little box, this one's just gonna go...
I've got a few of yours.
They've got twenty-six hundred, I think, seating capacity, and all those concrete benches out there. So the plumbing count for, for code is just insane, so... We were able to let them, let us use the existing, and the visitors, and, and they're, they're old, old, but we can keep, as long as you keep them operational, we could use that towards the plumbing count, although it's helped us take out like twelve that we were gonna have to add. It's still, it's in twenties and thirties, number two holes in that, but it's just, it's in the new area, but, uh, much bigger than what you're gonna need. And again, in terms of design, in terms of everything about it, it's really, it can be as simple or as complicated as you want it to be. And it's really gonna be sitting down and having those conversations, and prioritizing your budget, and, and, and function, and need, and, 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 and the image you wanna, you know, you're trying to show, and, and durability, and maintenance, and so, all, all of the above, and to give you what you want. So there's lots of choices, there's lots of options, even the ones you showed you, there's a pretty big spread. I know it's easy as designers, whether we're interior, exterior, or whatever, to, you know, sit there and tell you about our vision of what we think you ought to have, and, and just, at this point, just not even appropriate to, because, you know, it's, 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 uh, we can give you ideas, but it comes from that dialogue and that conversation of sitting down and helping you decide what's best for you.
Okay.
Steve, have you guys decided, uh, what you're going to do as far as delivery of how you want to build this stuff? You gonna try to do it as a construction manager or a general contractor?
We really haven't talked about it, but I, I know that the construction manager is probably the best way to go at this point in time, and everybody tells me in the school business, that's the way to go.
Yeah, I would agree. You know, most, I would say eighty percent of most every job that we do, uh, is through a construction manager. And out in western Oklahoma, uh, because of, well, well, it's just the lack of general contractors. So, so everybody's gotta come, you know, from, uh, from a general contractor standpoint, mostly from Oklahoma City, which just drives your cost up, and there's, there are some construction managers in the area, uh, you know, that work, and so they're using the local subcontractors, uh, which is advantageous really to you and the district, uh, you know, from a cost standpoint, and also a standpoint of, of keeping some of the business as local as you can. So, you know, that's consideration, for sure.
Sure. So that's, that's the end of our formal presentation, so if you guys have any questions, or anything you'd like to talk to us about?
Mr. Merchant, have you got anything you wanna say?
Yeah, I, in, when we were discussing, I, I, how, how and what do we present to, to you all, I mean, I want, I want to emphasize the fact that we're not coming in right now and saying, here's where we think this thing should sit and what it should work on. That defeats the whole purpose of, of what I did, cause I come from the same one from the school. I mean, that's, that's, that's my history, that's my background. And that's one, one of the biggest reasons why I made the commitment with, with that Woodward to, to go with Boynton Woods. Cause I knew we were gonna get product that we wanted. Uh, it wasn't, it, this wasn't going to be another firm's project, is this wasn't going to be Clarence Williams' project. This, this is the school's project. Yes, we could've stepped in and said, Tom and I had some heavy discussions on... Yes, we could have stepped in and said, Tom and I had some heavy discussions on this. Where do we set it? Where, where, what does it look like? You all aren't at that point yet. If, if, if we came in and put up there, okay, this is what your band room and vocal music room would look like. That frequency you set, that sets and as Tom emphasized, the whole process and the beauty behind VWA is they've got a multitude of, of, of people working for them with a lot of, a lot of skills. But in the bottom end of it, it's once hired to come in and, and then sit down and say, what do you want your project to be? What do you want it to look like? Fitting that within, you know, within the budget. Um, and that, from this whole process of hiring, when I was superintendent to now, now working. And, and yes, I, I worked for, for Clarence, but that's the beauty. Dale, Dale and I are coming from, as, as school people. We get to be the liaisons between the school and, 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 and Tom, Tom knows as well. I mean, we, how many miles have we put on and going and visiting the schools and visiting with them, getting the picture of what they, what they want their project to be. But in that timeframe, there's so much discussion between Tom and I and emphasizing that point. Get what the school wants and what fits best with their, their community.
One of the things that went really well with, uh, with, with, with Guyman, with Goodwill, a lot of these towns, they form a committee of, of members from the community. And we come up and meet with this committee. And I think Guyman, we came up every two, three weeks. And, uh, same with Goodwill and, uh, and Malco. You come up and you meet with them. Uh, you come up for committee, community meetings, get feedback from the community. And, and, and it's really a collaborative process. Where you can honestly look at anyone who asks you any questions. This isn't something we just made up on our own. This is something we involve you with. This is something we, you know, we listen. And, and it's our job is to listen to the community, listen to you, and to, to help you do something that you can be proud of. And that's going to be here, you know, long after you're off the board.
That's probably what I am most proud about from working with Clarence. He is that freedom to, to give back to the school itself. And, and once Dale and I jump in representing, representing the school to and with, with the company. So that, 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 that part in that whole process is huge. But I just want to emphasize that Clarence and his entire company know who they work for. They're working for the school. You hire them, they are your, your employees and are keeping you.
What they will not do is they will not violate a code or a, or a law to, to satisfy you. In other words, if it requires number twelve wiring and a contractor wants to put in a lighter wire or whatever, they won't, they won't do that for you. And I don't think you would want them to do that for you. But whenever he makes plans and specs, those plans and specs will be within the parameters that you want, but meet the law. And they'll, they'll come out and they'll meet with you as a superintendent and/or your designated. And the people that are going to be using these facilities, say, what do you want in this building?
Okay.
And, and the ones that's going to be using it may want, you know, they may want ceramic tile and they may not be able to afford ceramic tile. You know what I mean? They may get vinyl tile. But that's the type of things that we sit down with you and say, well, we, we sure would like to have ceramic tile. And so if you can afford ceramic tile, we'll, we'll spec ceramic tile. So.
Hey, one last thing, um, just to kind of wrap things up. One of the other things, because we're working out here all over this part of the state, we've got four guys in the office that do nothing but do CA work. They're out on the job, going job to job to job. It's one of the advantages that we really offer, uh, that, uh, because we're, you know, so fortunate to be doing a lot of work in the area. There's somebody out this way every day. Okay? And if they need to stop by and look at something, they're all going to be close. And, uh, you know, we joke about it at some level, you know, it's like, why don't we put an office in Woodward, you know? You know, uh, from our office to Guyman or to Goodwill is five hours. To Guyman is, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit less, it's four, four forty. And, uh, you know, I mean, I've driven it so many, I mean, I, I mean, I know how far everything is from every point, you know, but it's all represents from, you know, Norman to where I'm going. And, uh, you know, that's what I do. And, uh, I think that that's another great advantage that we do offer. And the ability to have someone looking at your work all the time. So anyway, Steve, if there's anything else we need to.
Well, there's always one more. What's your fee?
Our fee's six percent construction cost. We, we follow the standard AI, you know, what the, what the guideline says, you know? So there's always one more.
Alright.
Only you.
Any other questions from the board?
Hey, we'd like to work for you. I think you know that. And, uh, for the chance, uh, I guarantee the people that work with me and for me will do a good job. And that's what you're looking for.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming out. Thank you very much.